Okay, I'd like to call the March 26, 2025 Board of Selectments meeting to order at 6:30. First, this is a work session. First item on the agenda, non-public session. I had asked for non-public minutes to be handed out. They didn't get out until today. We're going to review them for unsealing, and I think one member wasn't able to, didn't have time to read them. We're missing one member. Is the board okay if we table that and move it to either the first or second meeting in April, depending upon how long those agendas are?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So we've got Brian, Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is a work session, default budget presentation discussion, and we're not going to make any decisions tonight or take any votes. We're here to listen and to ask questions.
Okay, so can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to come up here and do this from the podium because it will be easier for me to speak into the microphone so people at home can hear and I can read the presentation. Before I get into it, I'd like to thank the department heads and staff for the work that they've done with myself and the finance director since the vote. We've gone through, we have captured what the costs to maintain municipal services as level as we possibly can, which will require some line item transfers to be considered by the Board of Selectmen. Tonight's presentation is exclusive to the general fund. We have met with Barry from the electric department. We've met with Steve Randall from Water Sewer. We've met with Christine and Brian Paul from the Pop Whalen Arena. And right now, we believe that all of those enterprise funds are in very good position to operate for the year. Now, that does not mean that as the year goes by, we may be looking at some transfers within those funds. If you recall, last year specifically with the electric department, we had a storm around this time of the year that had a pretty significant impact on the electric department, and he ended up going over in a couple of his lines because of that. And we anticipate going forward that we may have to look at those adjustments as the year proceeds. But everybody feels very comfortable in being able to manage their budgets. What I'd like to try to do is get through the presentation. Myself and the department heads are here to be able to answer questions that you may have, and then we'll move from that point. So here's a copy of the warrant article regarding the 2025 operating budget. As you can see outlined here, the proposed operating budget with all funds, general, and the four enterprise funds, and all capital outweigh items was $35,943,677. The default budget was $33,650.63. That's what we have for an operating budget for the year of 2025, and that's what we have signed as a default budget, and we'll go through that. And we'll talk about some of the differentials within the proposed, the default, which is now our operating budget, and how we're going to make up some of the shortcomings. When I say make up some of the shortcomings, we're not going to make them all up. There's no physical way. But we've made excellent strides. We believe that we've put together a package that is going to work well for the community for the year. There's going to be some difficult decisions as well. The default budget is defined as "used in the subdivision means the account of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized from previous year reduced by increased," as the case may be, "by debt service, contracts, other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget, and by salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. For the purpose of this paragraph, one-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to reoccur in the succeeding budget, and eliminated positions shall not include vacant positions under recruitment, or positions redefined for the purpose of the operating budget as determined by the governing body unless the provisions of RSA 4014B are adopted of the local subdivision. In calculating the default budget amount, the governing body shall follow statutory formula which may result in a higher or lower amount than the proposed operating budget." If you recall, last year, after the 2024 budget failed, we had a default budget presentation that was a webinar that was pre-recorded by New Hampshire Municipal Association, and we went through that. And as a result, we believe that we did a better job in 2025 in building and defining the default budget. With that said, here is a copy of the default budget, which was signed by the Board of Selectmen. It was signed January 27, 2025, by all five members of the board. It was received by the town clerk and signed in. This is available on the town webpage. It's available in the offices, so if anybody wants to see this, they're more than welcome to ask and look for this document. As well, tomorrow, this PowerPoint presentation will be on the town website for anybody to download, review, print, et cetera. And there's a bottom line that shows you the default budget number circled at the bottom right of the left-hand picture. With that said, here's some of the backup information as to how we got to the default budget for 2025. And again, we're focusing heavily on the general fund. If you see the general fund on the picture to your right, the 2024 proposed operating budget for the general fund was $18,753,000. The default 2025 budget was $19,064,000. The deliberative session approved budget was $20,334,000. And that's a differential between the default budget and the approved budget at, the budget approved at the deliberative session for consideration of $1.2 million in the general fund alone. So what's our problem? The general fund proposed budget versus the default budget sees a reduction of $1,270,000. Myself, the finance director, have met with the department heads. We've reviewed the budgets. Below are the findings, or funding that we have identified as necessary to maintain current municipal operations. That is financing for the assistant town manager's position, wages, FICA, New Hampshire Retirement System, $143,000, rec desk software for Parks and Recreation, $500, excuse me, $5,800. Public safety building cost, the cost of the new building, we have an estimate from the engineer. We anticipate that increase of $40,200. Ambulance service, this is a big one, $501,047. Parks administration, $24,741. If you recall, a couple years ago, we transitioned some part-time employees into full-time positions. That's part of this impact. Groomer lease, $25,129. That was a lease that the Board of Selectmen entered into. And non-union wage adjustments estimated right now at $110,000. That total amount of funding comes to $856,288. And that's what we feel that we need to put together as a package to keep everything as stable and level as we can in the general fund for 2025. Did we get there? That's the question. So what we've done, we've met myself, the finance director, department heads, have identified the following proposals for transfers. I found $750,679 in items that I believe that you'll be able to transfer pretty easily. There are other items that amount to the total of $243,232. Those items, I do believe, require Board of Selectmen consideration because they are, in my opinion, outside of the realm of municipal operations, or the authorization to use those monies is required by the Board of Selectmen. And we'll get into those. So some of the areas of concerns, I heard it loud and clear at the deliberative session, assistant town manager, there's been a lot of information out there, some of it completely inaccurate regarding the contracted ambulance services and non-union wages. These are three areas of significant concern for me as we built through this. So I put together, as we went through the budget proposal, one of the things that we did was we transitioned our finance director into an assistant town manager's position until her retirement. Reason for that is, I think we all remember a few years back when Mr. Chamberlain retired, we went through a series of finance directors. We had significant challenges getting that office up and running and maintaining any level of stability in there. We saw an opportunity to advertise for a finance director, bring in a finance director, allow that finance director to mentor under Casey, operating as the assistant town manager, so that Sam would be able to get up to speed over the course of a year, and we wouldn't be in this turmoil that we were in five or six years ago within the finance department. So Casey is serving in this capacity until her retirement. She's providing guidance to the new finance director, who's learning this municipal finance system. It provides a succession plan for us going forward. And frankly, I've heard it loud and clear, and at this point, I have no intention on filling that role going forward upon her retirement. I think if we're able to capture some quality employees in other positions that we all know are vacant, that that will allow us to have somebody filling the role of assistant town manager. As you see to the top right, this breaks down the wages for the assistant town manager. There's a lot of rumors out there that the individual got a huge raise. There was no huge raise. There was no raise outside anything that other department heads received. Her wages are consistent with what was appropriated across the board. There were no raises outside of those issued to anybody else, or anything greater than anybody else. So her wages, $123,287. Telephone stipend for $300. FICA costs, $9,453. New Hampshire Retirement System costs $16,200, for a total of $149,306. That does not include healthcare, which is broken out into a completely separate line, as we're all well aware at this point. So I hope that identifies some of the issues and concerns about the assistant town manager, and we have captured these funds, and we'll discuss those as we move forward. The other thing that was of significant concern, and a lot of misinformation out there, was the ambulance contract. If you recall, last year, there was a petition warrant article that came forward for the $500,000 differential in the ambulance service. Had the warrant article for the 2024 operating budget have passed, then the contract would have been ratified by the voters, and the legislative body would have said, yes, we understand this contract, and we agree with the increases. However, that did not happen. We sought out legal opinion. Legal opinion stated, "The warrant article for the ambulance appropriation appears to be a one-time appropriation and expenditure in the event that the operating budget is not adopted. As drafted, it does not appear to be directly connected to the legislative body approving a contract for service." As a result, I do not think you can include the amount in the 2025 default budget. And that was written by our attorney on January 7, 2025. So we feel very comfortable that we follow the statute. We sought guidance, and we reiterated this at the budget hearings with the Budget Committee and with the deliberative session, that this was not part of the default budget. So I hope that clarifies the issue regarding the contracted ambulance services. The last item that is of pretty significant importance to me at this point is wages. I came in front of the Board of Selectmen in non-public session early January when we completed the ASME and NEPA union contracts. I provided a scenario for the full-time, non-union employees, part-time employees that outlined, I believe it was a 4%, 4.5%, and 5% raise. The Board of Selectmen agreed to the 5% raise, as I recommended, to be consistent with what we did for ASME and NEPA. Those two contracts for ASME and NEPA passed overwhelmingly, and we do believe that it's very important that we issue wage adjustments as soon as we can, so that we don't have compression issues related to staff, department heads, non-union employees, and continue to move our staff, who is working with tighter budgets, providing excellent feedback to me to help reduce these costs and make this work. And I think they deserve it. So that's the last real point of consideration regarding this. So when we look at the budget, what I've done to try and make this easy to follow, so you have some reference to go back to, this is essentially the presentation that was submitted for the budget hearing. This was then tied into the deliberative session format, and then we just, we adjusted it a little bit to show what the proposed budget was. The next line down shows what the default budget number is. Under that is a differential between the proposed and the default. Under that, we have proposed transfers. Now, when you look at the proposed transfers, you're going to see a number of them that will have an asterisk next to them. Those items that have asterisks next to them are items that I feel fall within the Board of Selectmen's purview to make the adjustment for. And these are all contained on a single pager at the end of the document, so that you have that to reference. So this is the first area that I know is going to be some challenging decisions for you to make. But what I've identified is the part-time wages at the chamber, $12,553. Social Security associated with that position, $843. Those are items that I think the Board of Selectmen should consider whether or not you want to continue to fund that or not. I don't feel it's my job to make that decision, because this is something that does not affect municipal operations directly. This is subsidizing another entity, and these are for the chamber. I have had a conversation with Mary from the chamber. She's aware this is on here tonight, and I'm sure, I did see her come in, and I'm sure she will speak to it. It is your discretion what you want to do. Additionally, the milfoil treatment, we brought down $5,900. The reason we did that, that's what was in the proposed budget. So we brought that back down to reflect the proposed budget. So the total cut in this budget is $19,296. Now, the bottom left, you will see a running tally as we go through this entire slide presentation of what we are at for transfers. As well, occasionally, you'll see some items to the right-hand side of the screen at the bottom. Those are items that I feel are important to maintain the level of services to the town. We have also put in here the five-year average, as was put together for the budget, for you to review, so you've got some data points to look at. As we move to the town manager's budget, default budget was $1,537, less than the proposed. We're proposing a reduction of $3,490. And those, as outlined below, to the left, it's the $19,000 from previous, the $3,400, and we're at a running tally of $22,786. Now, funding required, $149,306. Hopefully, that number looks familiar to you, because that is the number required for the assistant town manager, and we feel that this is where that line should go to fund that position wholly. So that's, we're asking for $149,306 at that point. As we move forward, ZBA had a reduction of $459. We're not proposing any transfers in that at this time. Planning Board default budget, this is a weird one, okay? If you look, the default budget is $20,776, an increase of $9,902. Two years ago, in the budget was $7,500 for outside services for impact fees. That was removed in the 2024 proposed budget. However, it came back in as the default. Guess what? It came back in as the default this year. We're recommending removing that. We're also recommending the $1,500, and we're also recommending $1,220 for a running total of $10,220 reduction in the planning board budget. So we have a running total of $33,006. Town clerk's budget, if you recall, last year, we had five elections. This year, we have two, I believe it is, relative to elections. I think it's important that we quickly cover that. Question whether or not we should have a special town meeting for the default budget. My take on this is 60% of the voters said, no. I don't think it's a real good idea, even if we come back with some efficiencies, to go in front of the voters and ask for a different budget. They spoke loud and clear. It wasn't 2% or 3%. I do think that we should take this budget and make it work. So the total reduction across the entire department is $20,320, a running total of $53,326. Finance department, this sees a slight increase, $20,317. We're recommending $33,926 in reductions for a running total of $87,252. Moving on to assessing, if you recall, the voters approved the revaluation. The cyclical data collection was not in the proposed budget. However, it did get put back in with the default. So we believe that we can reduce this budget by $43,045, gives us a running total of $130,297 for transfers. Tax collector, this is one of the areas that will be impacted to the citizens of the town. What we've done here is, we're in the final stages of hiring a third person in that office. I had a meeting with Brenda, and we've made the determination that we're not going to fill the fourth position. Not filling the fourth position at this point does cause some issues, and what we've decided, and what we've been doing for a little while now, because they've been understaffed, the office will be closed from 1:00 to 2:00, just like the town clerk's office. They will also be closing on Thursday afternoon to do some reconciliation. They've put it out on the webpage, but this is an area of big efficiencies that we can make up $49,716 and have a mild impact on the users in town. And Brenda does believe that she can continue to operate, given the proposed closures. That gives us a balance, running balance of $180,013. Legal, so the legal budget proposed was $115,440. We are going to reduce the $444 and basically leave the budget unchanged at this point. The default brings it back to that number. So we feel comfortable with that budget going forward, and the average is there for you to review. Personnel administration, this is one of the areas that's really challenging for us to stay ahead of. Right now, we believe that we can do an additional $68,080 in transfers. This is an area where each month that we go without filling some of our positions, we see greater savings, because we're not spending those costs for health insurance, which we all know is very expensive. Unfortunately, with what's going on in our planning department, what's going on in the staffing at the police department, we're going to see additional monies here as the year goes, and we are keeping a very close eye on it through our HR department. Miscellaneous operating expenses really is an area for you guys to consider. We have brought this back to $3,600, as part of the proposed budget. With the default, it went back to $5,600. We just have brought it back, $2,000, and I do believe that this is an area that the Board of Selectmen should decide whether you want to reduce that or keep that $2,000 in. Planning department total, leaving this unchanged, we see a slight increase within the budget of $1,874. This is an area that we could, depending on what we are able to secure for a candidate for the planner's position. We may see an increase in this line, but right now, we feel comfortable with the numbers we're at. Brewster Building, we have an increase in this budget, in the default of $12,682. We do have an offset here with the heat and oil costs. That was double-booked within the budget, and $1,000 for heating, so we believe we can make a reduction of $12,868 for a running balance of $262,961. Cemeteries, again, this is one of those default items. We backed out some staffing two years ago. It comes back with the default budget last year, comes back with the default budget this year. We do believe that we can make a reduction of $15,326 here. This, part of this is the gravestone restorations. If you recall, we were doing that for a few years, and we've been having trouble securing people to do the work. So spoke with Christine. We feel that we can back that down. Property liability, this budget, as you can see by the five-year average, we've only been really breaking this out this way for a couple years. And over that couple years, if you recall, we signed a contract with our property liability provider that the increases would not exceed 9%, and I think we've hit 9% both years. Remember as well, we also have some added properties coming online with the public safety building and the Pop Whalen Arena. So those are some of the increases as well. Technology, this is an area that we will have to watch going forward. We do have some equipment which is reaching the end of its life, and that will no longer be supported. We are working with Block 5 on that. The technology budget is a reduction of $71,000 in the default compared to the proposed. We also need to move $5,800 from We also need to move fifty-eight hundred dollars from Parks and Rec Administration to this line, and that is for the rec desk software. If you recall, we're trying to get all of the software packages into a single budget under technology, so that's why you see that number over to the right, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and six dollars. Police Department sat down with the Chief Captain Libby and Sherry. They feel very strongly that they are making headway in getting to fully staffed. However, they do not believe that they will be fully staffed in December. So they have agreed to allow us to have the funding for one personnel. So that's what is reflected here is seventy-seven thousand dollars essentially for a person. Reminder that their default budget actually went up as compared to the proposed. The chief came in, he actually had a lower budget in his proposal than last year's. He actually sees some favorability with the default budget as opposed to a proposed budget. So we have a current running total at this point of three hundred fifty-five thousand, two eighty-seven. Communications, unchanged at this point. He feels he can live with it. Animal Control, unchanged. She feels he can live with it. Fire Department Budget, this is one of the strange ones for you, okay? Top one, well, number one, they experienced a reduction of a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. One of the items that I would like for you to keep in the forefront of your mind, we did have a conversation with Legal on this. If you recall, we have a capital reserve fund for a fire apparatus. We spoke with Legal. Legal agreed that if we needed to, we could utilize the funding from that capital reserve fund under RSA 3515-3A for the purposes of paying for the lease. I don't want to do it. I don't want to get into that account. That's why we're sitting here saying, fourth quarter, if we're looking like we're in rough shape, we'll come to you in December and say, we need some of these monies, but we'd really rather not. And again, it's got an asterisk beside it because you guys are the agents to expend from that account. So we will keep that in the forefront for your consideration. Part-time wages, vehicle maintenance, machinery supplies, machinery maintenance, building maintenance, professional development, the chief was able to work with us and provide those reductions. All in, he made two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars in reductions, including the rentals and leases line. We don't want to do that, but if we have to, it's there for us. So we're at a running total of fifty-seven, five hundred and fifty-seven, five forty-five. Public Safety Building, we need an additional forty thousand, two hundred and two dollars based on the engineer's estimates to operate that building. So we have a running total of funding required to operate the town, in my opinion, of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Emergency Management, we're not going to change this. It sees a mild increase. This is the big one, right? Five hundred and one thousand, forty-seven dollars to maintain ambulance services. So that on top of what we've programmed to this point, we're at six hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars worth of funding that we've got to find to keep the town operating as level as we possibly can. Codes, it shows an increase of one thousand five hundred and two dollars, not proposing any movement in that department at this time. Health Officers, a reduction of a hundred dollars in the default. We're not proposing any movement at this time. Welfare, it's had an increase of one thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. We're proposing a reduction of that increase of one thousand four hundred and thirty-four Parks Administration, this is one of the areas that we want to be able to make up for the assistant town manager's wages. We're requesting transfer of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Streets and Highways, this is one of the areas that will most likely be impacted going forward. The differential here is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. This was for a lot of our roadwork, culverts, those maintenance items, as Steve discussed on the floor at the deliberative session. Will survive, but there will be an impact, but we do not think that we should touch this budget any further. We will, we will keep this right where it's at, and, you know, obviously, we just had a storm. We had a rough winter. We're going to keep an eye on this. Obviously, we have concerns when we get into October, November, December. What's Mother Nature going to do to us? Hopefully, she's kind. Bridges, this is a department that was established two years ago. If you recall, it basically is funded through some grant money that we have, so we're proposing no changes at this point. Public Works Garage, we're proposing a reduction back to what the proposed budget was because the default is higher, two thousand sixty-seven dollars. Buildings and Grounds default budget, it's a reduction of eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We do believe that we can remove the consultants in the amount of ten thousand dollars. I will tell you that part of the thought process of this and talking with Steve was we were going to come to you and start thinking about utilizing specifically some of this money for looking at the back pay docks. We know that we've got to do something back there. Those things are getting in rough shape, and we were hopeful that we would be able to potentially use this to initiate some work. I think we need to look at that differently next year based on what the voters are telling us with our budgets, but we're looking for a ten thousand dollar reduction here. Solid Waste, we're looking at a reduction of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Steve feels comfortable that he can live within that. Bulk of it is reduction in part-time wages. Agencies, we had two or one new agency this year, Greater Wakefield Resource Center, and last year, we had the Lakes Region VNA. We did fund the Lakes Region VNA last year in 2024 at their request of five thousand dollars. You know, they, they came in front of us, they, they did their presentation. I don't think these are big hits, those two items on the budget. In addition to that, for the past couple of years, the senior meals has gone away, if you recall, and obviously, that gets put back in with the default budget each year. So here it is again, asking to be removed out for a transfer to keep municipal operations moving forward. Parks Administration, this shows the transfer out for the software, the fifty-eight hundred dollars, but we do need an additional funding of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for those part-time wages that were transitioned to full-time. I believe it was a year and a half ago now. So that is what that represents. Parks Maintenance, default budget is six thousand eight hundred dollars less. We're proposing no changes here. Beaches, this is the big one, or one of the big ones. So proposing a reduction of fifty thousand dollars. A rationale really boils down to the five-year average. If you look across at that five-year average, we're running eighty-two thousand dollars. We have a default budget of one twenty-five. That, that's my rationale. I did sit down with Christine and Sam. Obviously, it's going to take management of the staff, and she's having an issue with staffing as well. I think we all know that. We do have an agreement with Brewster that we have to provide certain coverages. We'll do that, but this is an area that we believe that we can make up based on the five-year average. Additionally, same thing with programs. The programs budget saw an increase of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. However, the five-year average was seventy-nine thousand, with 2023 being 101. So we think we can back this down to thirty thousand, back this down by thirty thousand dollars. It gives us a running total at this point of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, one twenty-eight. Abenaki, here's an item that we need additional funding. The groomer lease, you as the Board of Selectmen have authorized a groomer lease. We had long discussions about whether or not to utilize the capital reserve fund for the lease purchase, and we don't think we should do that because this never went in front of the voters. This was an item that the Board of Selectmen, under their authority, entered into a lease for, and we do feel that we should absorb this in the operating budget as opposed to utilize the capital reserve fund, which had other authorizations. So that's our opinion at this point, willing to have conversations about that if the Board so desires. Hockey Rink, if you recall, on the floor at the deliberative session, there was a reduction of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Default budget comes in, wipes out that reduction, and we're back to a default budget of a hundred and thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Not proposing any change here at this point. Community Center default budget, see a slight decrease, not proposing any changes. Town Docks, this is one for you guys. This is a very popular program in town. I think the program's great, but when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of what the town needs versus what is nice to have, this is an area that I think you guys have got to weigh in on, and that's a request of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. I don't want to see this go away. I think there's a way to make it happen, but it's there for your consideration. Library, library has seen a reduction of thirty-nine thousand, one forty-three. Allison and Sam Matt, Allison believes that they can live within their operating budget as a default. Conservation Commission, a difference of three hundred and sixty-four dollars, not making any adjustments. Economic Development Committee, so we back part of this down. The other item here that is, I believe, Board of Selectmen discretion, community calendar for the chamber. Again, I had a conversation on Monday with Mary about it. She knows it's here as a proposal for a cut. It does not necessarily directly impact day-to-day municipal operations. This supports an outside agency. I do believe that the Board of Selectmen should take this under consideration. Same thing with the, the budget that was reduced by the four thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I think these are items that the Board should consider, ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine. Patriotic Purposes, this is a hot-button issue, I know it's going to be, but when I looked at it, at the end of the day, the, the five-year averages tell me that they can live with the four thousand dollar reduction. So that's, that's for the Board of Selectmen to consider. I think they can live with it. Fireworks, this, so here's a tough one, right? We have to have a discussion about fireworks, and it needs to be multifaceted. Number one, the budget is thirteen thousand dollars. Number two, the fireworks contract, which we can get out of, but we need to know soon, is seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars. So we will need to find additional monies if we want to have fireworks. I'm not sitting here saying that we should cancel fireworks, but I do think that this is something that does not have an impact on municipal operations as far as the fireworks display themselves. Indirectly, do they have an impact? Yeah. Police Department is about nine thousand dollars in overtime. Fire Department is about seven thousand dollars in overtime. Highway and Parks and Rec are about three thousand dollars in overtime. So we do have some costs outside of the fireworks to make that day happen between the parade and the fireworks. I don't want to see this canceled. I think this would be a really bad idea for the economy of the town, but it's there for your consideration.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
You know, through the end. Actuals at twenty-three thousand and forty dollars for 2023, but our budget is seventeen
I believe that had to do with, with donations, is that correct, Casey? That had to do with donations associated with, is it last night's fireworks?
Last night fireworks has always been in the economic development budget. It's never been...
The question was, why is the number bigger?
That's right, but what I'm saying, the last night fireworks was, that thirteen did not include last night fireworks. The last night fireworks was in the economic development committee.
Laser show?
In the, theirs, okay.
So if people at home can hear, it was actually the increase in the, to the twenty-two thousand dollars, which is because of the donations received for the laser light show, which is held at the Town Docks.
So the actuals actually spent in 2022 would have been around eleven thousand dollars, and in 2023 would have been about thirteen thousand dollars, because we received, we received ten thousand dollars in donation for the laser light show for both of those years.
I'm not going to dispute that. You sound like you have it nailed.
I think we need to, to look at this. I'm not sure we're right here, but that seventeen, that, I, I would like to take a closer look on this. I know, I'm questioning whether that is correct because I didn't think seventeen thousand, four hundred was the, had any of the Winnipeg Day fireworks in it.
No, the seventeen four is for the new contract for the Fourth of July.
Okay, then I don't think the thirteen thousand had any of the Winnipeg Day fireworks in it either.
Okay.
Because it's...
We'll, we'll do some research on that.
It would be far between three something. Those two, I think we should take a look at.
We'll, we'll do some research on that. Libby Museum, we simply backed down to what you had for proposed budget. We backed it down twenty-two thousand, one thirty-seven. Clark House, no change here, we're going to live with the default budget. Here's a couple of areas of interest, no pun intended, I guess. We do have some bond proceeds that are remaining in a account from the Public Safety Building. Recall, the voters approved the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be used for final upfitting of the Public Safety Building. On top of that, we have an additional balance right now of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. You as the Board of Selectmen do have the authority to utilize these funds to pay for the, apply it toward the principal payment of the Public Safety Building bonds. Those bonds in total are about a million dollars, so this would back down part of our debt service, and it would basically flush that account clean. So this is an area that we can make up some pretty significant efficiencies. Additionally, intercompany transfer, this is the debt payment for the Sewer Department. We do have about two hundred thousand dollars left in that project. We can apply monies to the principal payment of the Varney Sewell and Forest Road Sewer Extension. That principal payment for 2025 is forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and we do feel that we should apply that toward that debt. That gives us a running total at this point of nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. All of the projects that were in capital outlay, they're gone. They were taken out just to cover that base. So to summarize it, I have gone through, I've got seven hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars that I think you guys can do the transfers on and continue to keep operations as level as we possibly can for the community. I think there's two hundred and forty-three thousand that you guys need to make a decision on. One of those is a fire truck lease. It doesn't have to be done until the last quarter. And here's an outlay of what it's going to cost us, in my opinion, to keep the assistant town manager, the rec desk software, public safety building, operational costs, ambulance services, Parks Administration, groomer lease, non-union wages. That's a total of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. There's a differential between... There's a differential between what we have based on everything that's considered, that I've put together, that you have to take into consideration, and what it's going to take to run the town of $137,623. So we've captured more money than what we feel it's going to take to operate the town. With that said, here is a breakdown of the items that I do believe that you as the Board of Selectmen need to take really hard looks at and make the decisions about. With that said, I would hope that the Board of Selectmen, on the $750,000, we will have the document in your packet for April 2nd. Hopefully, we can move those monies through the line item transfer process and have you vote on that. I do think that you should think about, listen to your constituents, listen to the community about those other $243,000 worth of items. I think you should discuss it on April 2nd. I don't think that you'll be prepared to make a decision on that April 2nd. I think there'll be more research that we got to do to provide you answers, but I'd like to be able to try to make that by April 16th, if possible. With that said, that summarizes it. Brian, I hope I put it within the 45 minutes. I'm here, and the staff is here to try to answer questions that you may have.
I have one question. I thought in the 2023 budget, default budget, there was a town engineer in that budget. And we have no town engineer in the proposed budget.
Casey, you want to speak to that?
So in 2025's proposed budget, there is no town engineer. A portion of that salary was moved over to fund my temporary position, but with the default budget, it is put back there. So I think it's 60% or 70% of the previous town engineer is in that department, and so he made a recommendation to move that money to the town manager's spot.
Okay, that's what you're moving to the town manager?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I...
It's partially funding me.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
It's not creating a new head, and it's not a fully line item that needed to be funded. We're taking part of the town engineer and moving it over to fund the new position.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't pick that up.
Can I ask a follow-on question to that?
Sure.
So, I'm confused by the answer. So, the town engineer budget was...
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Will you give me the whole information?
In the general fund, it's not 100% of that man, that person was there.
So just take me on a walk. So we have a total town engineer funding line of X. Some of that was drawn off to fund the assistant town manager. What was the, how much was drawn off of that?
Eighty-four, eighty...
Eighty-four?
Yeah, he's got it right up there.
So what's the net amount that went into Jim's budget?
We need the whole 143, is that the number?
So the difference of 143 minus 84 is available for a town engineer funding?
Nope, there's none for the town engineer.
None.
The rest of, to make up the rest of what you needed for the assistant town manager was from the finance department.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, because your first, and I may have misunderstood, your first answer led me to believe there was something left, and the answer is, there is nothing left.
No, but I would like to say there has been some confusion. So the budget that was there, public administration had the public works director in it and the operations manager, and people kept pointing at that and wanting to cut it, saying it was the town engineer. It was not the town engineer. So that's where there was a lot of confusion going on.
So unless someone says something differently, there is no funding in the 2025 budget for a town engineer?
There is, and we're transferring it to fund the assistant town manager.
And how much is that amount of money?
Eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
You go to, you know what I think would be helpful? On page 40, you said proposed assistant town manager, and I think what needs to go there is this is the transfer of the town engineer, because I think we were having trouble with it, and we, I knew there was only one, but if that explanation is there, then everybody sees it.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you too, because I was hunting for the same thing you were...
Well, yeah. Can I ask a question of Jim?
Sure.
Jim, at the beginning, and you piqued my interest on this one, it was in the first or second page. Your words, no physical way to close the gap.
Yep.
What's that mean?
So that means there's a differential between the default budget and the proposed budget of $1.27 million.
One-two-seven-zero, yeah.
I don't believe that we can close the gap of the one-two-seven. And if we did, I guess the question I would have is, to what end? We've identified what we think we need. Yeah, if we close the gap, we may be able to buy Public Works some more culverts and some more gravel materials and whatnot, but we spoke with Steve. Steve believes that he can live with the funding that was given to him by the voters. So we closed the gap as close as we could. We're at $1 million. Could we close the 2.7? We could, but it would mean, in my opinion, it would mean negative impacts to our enterprise funds.
And I'm not, if I could follow up on this?
Absolutely.
I'm not in any way, shape, or form trying to do anything other than have you help us understand the gravity of the decisions we have to make or the non-decisions we potentially could make. Well, we don't want to do that one. I think what you're suggesting here is, we could go deeper, but we might be talking about doing something that would not be in the best interest of our associates?
Yeah, I mean, that's where the rest of the money lies.
I'm just trying to get it out there to measure us up for the challenge we have ahead, to be firm about what we need to do.
So, obviously, staffing and benefits is a huge portion of our municipal operations budget. If we all of a sudden decided that, you know what, we want to hit that $1.2 million, either A, you have to make impacts to the funding for the enterprise funds, which I can get into a little more detail if you like, or we have to go to staffing. And it's hard enough to find staffing as it is. We've got a great staff, and I want to keep them here as long as we possibly can.
So how can we not take, if it's 1.2 million between the, that we need to take out of the budget in order to make the 33 million, we have to take that 1.2 out. How can we not?
It's already out.
You've taken 1.2...
The voters took it out in the default budget as compared to the proposed.
Oh, okay, I got you. That's that gap, okay, okay.
That's that gap.
And that we're inside getting to the 33, so that 1.2 is really immaterial. We're just trying to make that 33.
We're just trying to fund things that were lost in that 1.2. So we're transferring...
I, yeah, I just wasn't quite sure what he was...
And that effect will be zero, right? I mean, we're just moving stuff in and out, in and out to try to fund those...
Yeah, so the proposed budget is now gone. We shouldn't even think about that. All we're thinking about is the default budget now, and all we're doing is looking at each department and where they can give up some money, and we can move it to another section if we need to, so that we meet the default budget amount. And the citizens need to know that. That's the goal, and that's what we're doing.
And that 1.2...
And it's not that we're short, and we're not hitting their number that they said for the default budget.
That's correct.
That's all we have to spend. If they give us this much, that's all we spend.
We got that. It just, he was talking about that figure, and I wanted to have clarity on what that he meant by that figure. My other concern here is, when you talked about the part-time wages in the executive budget, and you said that was off to an agency, that if we take that, we are removing the town of Wolfboro's information booth. We pay, so it's not, it's not to the chamber. We pay those salaries. And you say it's to an outside agency. It isn't. It's our staff that goes in there three days a week all winter long. So I just want that clarified, that this is not to an outside agency. Those are, we pay the wages, it's our information booth. We used to have an information booth up at the top of the hill, Pickering Corner. We took that away. We moved our staff down to the train station as part of the, in part of the area that the chamber rents. They cover the information booth when we don't have a staff member there, but those, we pay those wages. Am I correct?
I don't know.
Yes. Yes, so that is our part-time person that we're removing.
Okay, something new tonight.
Yeah, what, yes, we do. I agree with that.
And you could see them in the executive budget.
Somehow gets blurred into things as opposed to being called out. Can I, one more, are you, you got one? So, we never, or did we? Did we get an estimate of how much we were going to rely on inspection services from the planning board for the warrant article, number seven, no, I'm sorry, number three that got passed? Did we get an estimate that says this needs to be funded, inspected? Did we get any estimate from them?
To my knowledge, I know of no estimate received. I believe Planning Board did speak with the previous codes officer, and I think he may have spoke, they may have spoke with the fire chief a little bit about it. Yeah.
I didn't hear what Tom said.
Chief, could you come up and address that? And from your perspective in conversations regarding the short-term rentals, do you see that as an impact on your operations and costs? And I don't know if you tied any conversation in about code enforcement?
We met, we being the interim planner, the interim building official, myself, the chairman of the planning board, Kathy Barnard, and Leanne last Thursday, I believe, to try to...
Last week?
Last week.
After the vote was taken?
I'm sorry?
After the vote was taken?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To try, since the vote, it was approved, to try to figure out what the path forward was going to be and how this was going to look. We drew some conclusions. From a fire rescue perspective, obviously, one aspect of the ordinance requires us to be part of the inspection process. The initial draft that I saw, I was very concerned about the added workload. When it became clear, as this progressed, that the ordinance technically only applies to new rather than all, I became a little less concerned, because the idea of dumping 200 or so more inspections on us is a problem. My understanding is, from the rooms and meal tax data and so forth, I think they were using as an estimate, there are about 200 short-term rental properties, for lack of a better description. That said, if, and indeed, the ordinance only applies to new, I'm moderately concerned about the workload. I don't know that it'll dump a number of inspections on us that we can handle. What my concern is, is that because of the nature of it being short-term rentals, everybody wants it tomorrow, and we may not be able to accommodate that. We have a limited but growing number of members of our department who are certified to do inspections. However, you know, we do have to work it into the normal day-to-day workload. As a bigger picture, we kind of reviewed the language and make sure we all understood who was responsible for what. The way it was left was, Leanne was developing a draft form for an applicant to fill out to circulate among us for feedback, and then at some point in the future, be ready to hit the ground with that.
So I have some problems with this whole thing. One, I don't understand how we only care if new short-term rentals are safe and we don't care about old short-term rentals.
My understanding, for what it's worth, is because it's adopted as part of the zoning ordinance, it only takes effect from the date of, I guess, the posting or the day when the Planning Board voted to move that to the warrant, is the operative date, as I understand it. So anything that existed before that date is pre-existing, non-conforming. A new applicant would come along and they'd start the process. It apparently would be, wouldn't be disallowed, that if somebody with an existing one wanted to go through the process, they could apply for that? How many might do that? Oh, yeah, no idea.
So if somebody stops renting for a year, now are they still grandfathered?
Technically, again, I don't want to interpret the zoning ordinance.
Let me finish. If somebody transfers property, sells it, are they still grandfathered?
I think you're now asking legal questions, questions that would go over to the planning board.
Where are the fees to support this? Where are the fees to support Tom's...
So I...
I think that doesn't have anything to do with this. That has to do with the planning board. You can take those questions to the planning board.
With respect, I disagree. This has to do with the budget. This has to do with how many people you're going to need, how many people the planning department's going to need, how this infrastructure gets built. We are either going to enforce the ordinance that's been adopted by a 1599, by two to one by the voters, or we are not. And that's not up to you, but my, we haven't, what I would, I've heard this on the news, so I can't take credit for it. This is an unfunded mandate, and we better figure out how to fund it, or the Board of Selectmen is going to have to say to the voters, we can't support it. That's how I come out on this. Now, I may get outvoted, but unless we come up with the money to figure out how to fund it, I think we got a problem.
Guilford has exorbitant fees for this.
So between now and then, and Brian's, you know, you write about fees and all this infrastructure and all that stuff. I got it. I agree with you. But between now and the time we, you know, we take the crayon and put it down on the budget, I'm going to, if I don't see anything in the next couple of weeks, not a threat, if I don't see anything in the next couple of weeks, I may just make a motion to put $50,000 more ballast on this budget to, as a placeholder to fund it. Or we take a vote as select board members and say, we're not doing it next year, in 2025. We're not doing it.
Well, I think that's one of the options, and we don't, when I was saying that, I think we need some understanding from the planning board, you know, on what they had thought about. My understanding is they did meet and talk prior to the warrant article going out, but we need to get some of that clarity from them, you know, and this was a department that had no department head, no one who was on top of it to put it in the budget. So my feeling is, we need to go back to the planning board, find out from the planning board when they plan to start doing it and what kind of costs they are, because I have no idea.
Well, I agree with you, Linda, but...
And I think it has grandfathered those beforehand, the questions about whether it's one year, two year, that's what I was saying, needed to go back to the planning board or to legal. We can't do that. Your question of whether we need to take our, some money in here to account for it, I think we need to get more input from the planning board on what they want to do. So I think whoever is our representative to the planning board needs to do that.
That would have been Mr. Harriman. So I agree that we didn't have a planner. That's a self-inflicted wound. This is a budgetary item. We're either going to catch a lot of thought leadership from people that say, hey, you didn't inspect mine, or why didn't you inspect mine, or that one wasn't inspected. We either do it, or we don't, and we have to have a funding mechanism to do that.
So I have a question to Mr. Zadi. So did you have a conversation with a chairman or the vice chairman in this matter?
You mean, prior to the meeting?
Well, you just, you discussed a board member, so I'm, you didn't discuss the chairman or the vice chairman that you met with, so...
The chair, as I understand it, Doug was in the meeting, and I believe Kathy Barnard was the other one.
Okay, so I...
They sent a draft around back in the fall.
I thought the chair was Doug and the vice chair was Steve Webster.
Steve was not there, I can tell you that.
That's correct. You're correct. But they sent a draft around to...
They sent a draft around back in the fall.
Okay.
I, at least, I received it... Um, I, at least, uh, I received it, I believe, the code enforcement officer at the time received it, and they asked us for some feedback. I can't speak directly to other feedback they received. My concerns with the way it was written at the time, um, and there's an email that I can certainly produce if you want it. Um, number one was exactly what Mr. O'Brien has referred to, is if we're going to do this, we need to either decide we're going to enforce it or don't bother. Um, but again, at that time, it wasn't clear in my mind that it only applied to new and not all. Um, that changed my thinking a little bit when that became clear. But number two, there was some language in there that, uh, as a practical matter, would be rather difficult for us to, um, address, and, you know, I, I can go out into the weeds if you want, but they took, uh, at least a lot of what I had suggested was incorporated into what was on the ballot. I thought, um, uh, after the feedback, it was kind of implied that the, the, the whole thing was going to be held off for a year to, to tweak it and, and do some more work on it. Um, in all honesty, I found out it was going to be on the ballot when I got a call one day from Mr. O'Brien, who said, "What do you think of this?" And I said, "I thought we were waiting another year." He said, "No, it's on the ballot." And I went, "Oh, boy." Um, but again, uh, they did revise the language to address, I think, the majority of my concerns. Um, but one of my primary concerns was what this was going to do to the workload of the staff. Uh, again, once we found out that being zoning, it would only apply to new, I'm not convinced we're going to get swamped with applications, so I felt fairly comfortable that, you know, if the direction from your, the board and the manager is to, to work with this, we'll be fine.
So, um, if the board thinks it would be advantageous, we've seen Oscepi put in some things on short-term rentals, Alton, Guilford, Laconia. I wouldn't, I would like for Wolfboro not to get too far behind and to see what they're doing, how it's worked, because some of them are on their first and second year of this, and I wouldn't mind being a point person, or if Paul wants to, calling some of these towns and asking, "How's it working for you? What are your fees? What are your costs? Who does your inspections?"
Can I make a comment?
You can make a comment anywhere you want.
I wouldn't mind doing that, but we, we got a planning board.
Well, we don't. We do, we don't.
Well, wait.
No, no, we got a planning board.
Yes, we do.
We may not have a planner, but we got a planning board, all right? And it's, it was those, you know, wonderful human beings that came up with this notion. I have to believe they went out and did some research. And maybe we, you know, we kind of send a message to the planning board that says, you know, within the next week or so, you need to come up with some numbers, because very frankly, I, I think this is an unfunded mandate. I really don't want to sit here and get yelled at by people that say, either they did or they didn't inspect my property and you didn't, I don't want to go there. I, I don't want to go back down that path again. I just think if we're going to do it, which the voters said they were going to do it, we fund it and we operate it.
And I think the response to go back to the planning board, you're saying, is right on.
And, well, and Brian and I can tag team, we can help them get it going, but I, I think there's a, there's a time is of the essence thing here, because we have a budget. And that, and I did, I, the reason I asked Jim the question is, I, I had, I looked, I looked over these things, oh, only cursory today. We are, we are, we are, we are at a tough point in, in doing some things. There's some stuff in here that I personally think is not smart, but on this grand scheme of things, I come to the conclusion, we got to do it. So, uh, in terms of department cuts. So I, I, I don't want to get us in deeper of a hole, I just want to get us into a situation where we are operating on things we say are important and we do them. Enough of the speech.
Linda, I have, I have one more.
Sure.
Um, the rink.
The rink.
At the deliberative session, the voters did say to cut that by, boy, was it 48 or 68,000?
68.
68. This is a, a tough decision for us, because they said something at the deliberative session that we kind of have to listen to, but I don't know if we have to listen to it to that degree.
Well, they, if they had passed the budget, we sure would have.
I understand, and that's the, that's the conundrum that I am in, because by, by going to a default budget, they, they again backed that out.
Mm-hmm.
But we might, we might have to consider intent, which is difficult, and I don't know what to do with that. It's just a thought, it's just something we need to think about.
So, could I?
Yeah, and then I'll follow. Is it going to be where Brian is on?
Yeah, it's on the rink.
Okay, then I will come after you.
So I, uh, I, when, when I looked at, I'm out of hell with it, I don't know where the piece of paper is. The difference between the default budget and, uh, the budget that came out of the deliberative session did have the reductions in it for the revenue for the, uh, for the rink, as well as a, uh, on-the-floor adjustment to the, um.
What?
Casey, I'm not picking on the town manager, ATM is the thing. So those adjustments were made at the deliberative, and then the default comes out, and if you take those two numbers and you do a, a subtract out, those numbers were already taken out at the deliberative. So the 1270 is the, is, reflects those revenues and that cost coming out.
No.
Well, well, help me with that, because I think it does.
So if you look, you will see that the default budget was signed January 27th, which is a week prior to the deliberative session. That number was set in advance. Can be adjusted on the floor statutorily, period.
Yep.
I, I got that part. The deliberatives, where you came up with the 1270, just show me the math as to where you came up with 1270. It was the difference between the, um, the default budget and what took place at the deliberative session.
Page seven.
Is that right, page seven?
Page seven.
I may, I may be, I may be a little slow here, so. On page, there we go. On page seven, the 25 default budget, 19064267, and then the del sess, that's the deliberative session, 2334948. The delta between those two is 1270. So, at the deliberative session, it was motions on the floor to take out some revenue and to take out some expense.
From the proposed.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because you can't touch the, the default.
You can't touch the default.
Assistant town manager is already out of the 2334 as well, right? Okay. They're over that.
So those are netted down, just.
But they're in the default.
But they're in the, so, yeah, so walk me through this, because I, I started a conversation with Jim, I had a quick question, and I, I'm just confused on the walk. Walk me through, are we double counting it, or are we taking it out twice? Help, help me understand that, you know what I mean?
We're only taking it out once.
We're taking it out once. We're putting it, okay.
Page, page 53, that shows the rink at 41750 and the default at 100,000, 1048, and so that is the difference.
I got that. What I was, what I was reacting to was.
Was this page?
The bigger question of 2334948 minus 19064, net 1270, and I'm going, that include, that 20 included the reduction already. So, and it, the reduction on the revenue side and, and the OpEx side, right, for, so we're good.
Right, the 1270 would have been higher.
It would have been higher by the sum of those two, those two numbers. So we're good. It's already out.
It's already out.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry for belaboring, it's the way my brain works. Okay. Thank you.
If I could just back up about the, um, inspection item that you guys were previously discussing. If that is an item which is important to the board, um, I, I would sit here and tell we have identified $993,000 worth of potential transfers. We've identified $856,000 that we need to keep the town, in my opinion, running. That means there's a balance there of $137,000 for discretionary items to reduce out of the Board of Selectmen items for consideration, or if it's important to you, you could apply some of that 137 to, uh, additional, um, staffing for.
For the code thing.
Code staffing.
And am I correct, out of that 993,000, there is the 182,000 transfer out of the capital reserve account, which we really don't want to do.
That is part of the 243 number, correct?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think that's part of what I need to go home and kind of play around with and look at, because I don't particularly want to do that, which causes us to, you know, have other issues.
Linda, I agree, and that's why I'm saying the fourth quarter, because I think we're going to see some efficiencies in healthcare, because we're having a terrible time securing staffing.
Yep.
Yeah.
But.
Never want to plug a number with revenue.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Again, the reason I was, I was asking the question earlier is, I'm, I'm, I just, I look at this and I, I think we, we, we don't want to make decisions that we don't want to look back on and say, "Boy, was that stupid."
Well.
And we also want to make decisions, you know, why I got a little on my pedestal with this warrant article. We don't want to say to the voter, "Thank you very much for voting two to one, that you're really supporting this, but we have no intention of supporting this, we fought to do the budget." That, that's an excuse I don't think we get away with.
Yeah, and that's why I really think we got to go back to the planning board and kind of get them to, because.
Hitty up.
Yeah, they, well, they've got to let us know where they are on it and what they're going to do and how they're going to, you know, it's like the last meeting, I said they better get their application form and their checklist, and we just need to make sure. And right now, we don't have anybody, because Brad, um, um, didn't run, we don't have anybody on that board, and whoever is from the Board of Selectmen has some of that to take care of.
Two more.
So can you, can you explain the Libby budget to me, Jim?
Sure.
So it starts with a Libby total budget, 27,000, default budget, 47,000.
Yeah. So what happened there, John, is the Board of Selectmen, when we went through.
60.
We closed the, uh, Libby museum in the summer of 2024. We got into budget season. It was determined to make some, uh, reductions in staffing and some other items relative to the operations of the Libby museum. Um, however, when the default budget hit, the 2024 budget number got tied back in as the default budget, not the proposed, which had the reduction. Therefore, you see the 20,373 dollar increase in that budget because it's default.
So what's being paid for at the Libby?
That's, thank you.
So that, that would be, uh, one staff member and, uh, you know, some minor ancillary items. Uh, I, I can get you the budget.
Just curious.
Utilities and security.
Utilities, security, ancillary items.
So that's around $20,000?
So, so we will have that, that's in this default budget, so we should see that. If we want to know what it is, we should go back to this default budget that you gave us.
Yeah, I have that.
And then that, look at the Libby and then.
Correct. I, I like, you know, I agree. I like Jim's answer. Jim's answer was simple. You know, we, we, we took it down as selected people, we, we went to default and then the default budget, everything, those things that we took down got jacked back up, um, albeit at a, at a lower level. So, um, yeah.
Because, because you got to take this and you got to look at this.
Yep.
In order to get the full picture of what we're doing here, because the default budget in here, um, shows us some other significant cuts that we don't see, you know, here. And, and I'll look, I'll do the executive budget, you know, is, there's a lot of cuts in that executive budget that some agencies may have some issues with or have a hard time with.
Sure.
So we're saying that it costs, and I'm not saying that, that it's a bad number, but it costs about $27,000 just for the Libby to sit there.
With a director.
With a director. Do we need a director?
I just, decision to go, going to create a fast budget.
Yeah, here's a question. Do we have a director?
I don't want to get into personnel matters.
You know what? That's one of the things when we kind of come down to the end here, and we're looking for, we're going to have to make some of those decisions on where we go.
All right, I want to do an ugly one. Can I do an ugly one?
You always do ugly ones, so go ahead.
Back to the pop. So we, we, we have a, and I, I, I still, I just want to understand the walk, just, Casey, walk me through this one, okay? We, my words, we write a check for $100,000, 100,448, as a, we stake revenues, that goes into them as revenue, all right? Right? Good so far? Okay. And then their expenses are, hopefully, they offset, and at the end of the year, the ambition is to get that whole thing to zero. We know that. What would happen if we did not stake the Pop Whalen that $100,000? What would hap, walk me through the financials of what would happen. Pop Whalen would show an operating loss at the end of the year, let's assume they were at a break even. That operating loss would automatically go to 100. And then where would that 100 come from to top it off?
So the enterprise funds always have to have the, um, balance, right?
Right, past the zero.
The revenue has to match the, um, expenses. So had they taken out the $60,000, then they have to spend 60,000 less, or 100,000. You, you said 100, I'll stake with 100.
Okay.
So if the town decides not to give Pop Whalen $100,000, in theory, they can't spend the 400 and whatever number that is in front of me. And I'm not sure they could sustain, that's, you know, 25% cut to that budget. So they have 435,000. If this town decided not to give them the 100, then they only have two, um, three, three-fourths of what, what they need to run the business.
And I'm not suggesting by any stroke of the imagination that we would allow this to happen, but if we, if they said best efforts, because that's what they do, I mean, you and I know this, we were going through this month over month over month, best efforts, that's the plan, they're going to get to break even, and they never got there, all right? No picking on them, it's fact. Um, if, if, if the 60,000 were taken out, they would show an operating deficit of 60,000, let's assume they were at a break even, they'd show an operating deficit of 60,000, where would that extra 60,000 come from? Would either come from, we allow them to be a going concern problem, or we would top them off. Where would we top the money off from?
We don't top them off. It just becomes a due-to, due-from.
Due-to, due-from. Okay.
Pop Whalen owes general fund, whatever they've.
I'm just trying to turn over the rocks.
Yep.
I'm just trying to turn over the rocks.
And you bring, yep, and you do this?
Let me, let me kind of clarify a rock. We're not giving them the money. We are paying for ice time.
Correct.
The question becomes whether the public is using all that ice time. It's itemized. I can go right down the budget and know how much we're paying for stick and practice, et cetera, and how many times we have it. The question is, is anybody coming to the pop to use those times, okay? And there are times that we are paying for, that the place is packed. So that becomes the question that we were struggling with before.
I look at it as like a lawyer retainer, right? Where we bargain so many hours that we are, are going to pay with Pop Whalen, and that's what we pay them, whether we use more or less.
I like, didn't like the word "give." And I write it right down.
And we don't write a check. I didn't correct him, but we don't write a check. It's just a, a book entry. And we do it every quarter.
Yeah, it, it, whatever it is, it's 100,000, 60,000, whatever the number is, it is coming in through general taxation.
Correct.
And it's going right over there, and it's going in as revenue. You can call it, write in a check, give it them money, subsidy, help, what, help, I don't care. I was trying to figure out how that transaction, that financial tra, de-emotionalizing it, how that financial tra, transaction would work if we just simply said, "We're not doing it." They would either have to raise revenues, or reduce costs, or a little bit of both.
Correct.
Okay.
Or come to the conclusion that they can't fund themselves.
So the way I've always looked. Or come to the conclusion they have to find another source of funding.
The way I, the way I've always looked at it, the pop, is, the old movie theaters when I was a kid, if you went on Wednesday at two o'clock to the matinee, there was four people there.
Yes, you got it, you got it.
And, and your popcorn was seventeen dollars a bucket. Okay? And your ticket was four dollars. So this is the way the rink works, there are times when there's only four people, and our popcorn isn't seventeen dollars though, and, and it's underutilized, and then on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, you go to the movie theaters, you're waiting out in line, you can't get in, you can't get a seat, the popcorn is still seventeen dollars, but, and the ticket's six dollars. Oh, that's like prime ice compared to non-prime ice, and, and so on and so on. So it works like that. What I was hoping to do, and I've been asking for two years now, is to see if we could actually have an exact tally of which ice hours are very, very underutilized.
That's correct.
Not because we can do anything with it maybe, but just so that I would know, it's just one of those pieces I would want.
So, for the public skating and stick hours, I was very honest what I was putting out, so you could see. So if you came to a meeting during the day and you saw that nobody was on the ice, we actually are sitting there in our offices, so for us to have public skating or stick practice, it's bringing in revenue. But it's not really technically counted towards the town ice, because we, we count that as like when we're bringing people in on nights and weekends, and we're not sitting there. So if we don't open the ice during the weekday, it would just sit there anyways, but we're sitting there, so it's no cost, because we're already there, we're just flipping the lights on and they're just coming in and using it. So you're right, it's underutilized, but it's during the weekday, otherwise we just shut the doors, nobody could use it, but you do have occasionally people coming from Laconia who want to skate, or they're on vacation. You'll see it during the Christmas Vacation Week, February Vacation Week, it's pretty busy, right? But if it's the other days, you mostly get homeschoolers, we have a very active men's hockey leave, if you come Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, there's like twenty, twenty-five guys on the ice, so.
What time it, give the time on that.
Uh, it would be nine or eight-thirty in the morning to ten or something like that.
So it's not, I just want to make sure that people.
Yeah, it's an hour and a half that they're there, but it's every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so we've actually grown that, just because we've been consistent with that time.
Yep.
So you're right, I mean, I can, I can say, oh, we only had one person, but technically, it was one person, the ice was sitting there anyways, it's no cost, you're still paying for the ice, now you're getting some revenue for it.
I'm sorry.
On top of what we pay.
On top of what.
That's what I, when, when, when we have our ice, we pay the two hundred and, two hundred and fi, fifty dollars an hour.
So you're paying that too, so we're not selling it to somebody else, so instead of saying, hey, we'll sell it to this high school, we're saying, this is a public skate time, so it's designated for them. Otherwise, we could sell the ice to everybody else, and then the public would have no ice time, right?
Plus, we get six dollars or whatever the fee is, so we pay, we pay for the ice, and then they have to pay to use it, so we get some revenue back from that.
So the men's league is renting the ice for the hour?
It, no, that, that group that comes in the morning, those are just a group of men who get together, and they're paying public stick practice fees. There is a men's league at night, but this is just during the day, a group of guys get together and they just all meet up and come and play.
It's kind of like stick practice, like our kids got their stuff and go down and.
They're getting a bargain.
So since you're up there, is, is, is your line item programs?
Yes.
So if they cut thirty thousand from your programs, what are they, what are they cutting?
So in a perfect world, I budget according to what we need, right? And every year, we're trying to secure staff, and every year, we kind of struggle with that. We also base it on, so for day camp, for instance, it's, when we open registration on April first, we'll put how many children that could enter in that program. So I based it on how many counselors I would hire. So roughly, it's been about six counselors, in previous years, it's been ten, so I budgeted for ten, because we've always done that in the past, but lately, it's been a little less. So we're going to, so that could affect that, we won't hire ten counselors, but we might not need ten counselors, we'll open it up to sixty children, and we'll have the six counselors. So we'll just have to gear it to ratios and numbers, really.
That was kind of where John was, your, your beaches is down forty-one percent, that's a, that's, that's, that's a number, that's a forty-one percent, and your programs is down twenty-three percent, quick math, that's a, that's a big number. Either A, was overbudgeted in the first place, which you just disabused that, false idea, or B, you're, you're not seeing a lot of uptake, but you, you're trying.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's one of those, you can't say you were packing it, you were trying the best you could, so we're going to have to leave that one alone, but that's a big hit.
Right.
That's a big hit.
It is.
Okay.
But if you look at the five-year averages, that's where you get to feel a little bit more comfortable of taking that hit, because it has been hard. Lifeguards, I can remember you coming in, and we used to have lifeguards on all the beaches, you just couldn't fill them, and we cut back and cut back our staffing based on what we could find, and it falls within the average this year.
Thank you for Christine, for signing up for a big hit.
We did, we did implement people to check in vehicles, so that's kind of an increase there also.
So we do, so we traded lifeguards for beach attendants, yes, yeah.
And there's no way we can walk away from that, right? We, we, that was a Warren article?
What?
On the, uh, uh, beach stickers, that's, that was a Warren.
That was a Warren article on the two beaches.
Yeah.
We held a number of public hearing, talking to the public and trying to get a sense, and we stuck with what was voted in.
Yep.
Do, do we give our, our lot attendance training for lifeguard duties?
No, you have to be certified to be a lifeguard.
You pay them less.
They're basically eyes and ears of the beach, so if there is an emergency and they see it, they'll call nine-one-one, but they're not, they have, most, some of them will take CPR and first aid, but they're not trained as a professional lifeguard to rescue from the water.
Okay.
And you really wouldn't want them to be responsible unless they're there a hundred percent.
Well, I, I would think just if we had a, an attendant at the, at the booth, and then someone all of a sudden was having a problem in the water, I mean, if the, if that booth attendant had the ability to rescue someone, I, that's not a bad.
Well, typically, typically, we have two, you have two lifeguards together, just for that safety purpose, you'd never have just one guard on, so even if I can't secure two lifeguards sometimes, I will make them a beach attendant for that day, so I have eyes and ears there, but I never put somebody just alone.
So how, how are you with lifeguards?
Uh, we're, we've had some interviews right now, we typically, we do pretty good, last year was a little tight, we try to manage out the best we can, we lost our aquatics director this past season, she's not coming back, so we're looking for a new aquatics director, but we were able to secure swim lessons last year, and we were able to man Brewster the best we could with lifeguards. So we really tried to focus on the weekend hours, Friday and Thursdays, but if we can do it during the week, we try to do it during the week as well.
So since Brewster is a deeper water, do you focus on a lifeguard at Brewster Beach since it's a deeper?
That's the only place we have lifeguards. We do have a lifeguard that is kind of a program guard that goes with our day camp on Wednesdays, so we have a certified lifeguard, but we have the staff that's there to help support if there is an incident while they're in the water, but other than that, it's only at Brewster Beach that there's lifeguards.
And that's due to our lease agreement with Brewster Academy, they required us to do that.
Yes.
And if, and if you had a unusual high number of children that signed up for your day camp programs, I'm sure that we could do something, we wouldn't be turning kids away.
Correct, correct, yes.
Where you gonna get the money?
Well, wait a second.
Wait, 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 whoa, 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 whoa. Where you gonna get the money?
We're cutting everything we can here to try to make.
But I mean, we look at what the numbers are, so would it be like we'd have more of a day camp versus a sailing was down, or something else was down, we could repurpose that.
You could repurpose.
So right now, we're trying to have, right, we're trying to hire staff, so like, we hired an assistant sailing person, but we don't have a lead in sailing instructor, so if that assistant sailing person needs a job, we could say, well, we couldn't get, we couldn't secure sailing, but maybe we could repurpose you into a day camp counselor, because we need help there, so that's what we're looking for.
And I'm not suggesting you, you, anything but agree with this, you know, so Brian's thing, if one program starts to swell, your, your answer is, I'll, I'll make up the resource, but I'll stay within my budget.
Correct, correct, I'm not getting any extra money, I'm just.
That's what we're looking for.
And, and my, the community center, utilization of the community center, you know, I know it's a de minimis number, but I've seen and heard, you know, it's asbestos, all, what's the deal?
So the community center right now is used by quilters, they have their Mondays and Tuesdays there, and we use it for the seniors. So that's typically Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have their coffee and conversations there, and then we do a lot of our pop-up programs there. We occasionally will allow meetings there, but as far as renting it to the public, we don't typically do that, just because we don't have a staff on duty to make sure the building is secure, so we encourage Abenaki or Pop Whalen to rent facilities.
But we have reports on both of those buildings.
Yes.
So you should get that.
No, I, I.
Well, okay, so then you know.
I was watching TV when Kim told us about it.
Okay, so you have copies of it, it lays it out pretty clearly on what, you know, that's a worn-out building.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's the question, the question is.
To say it lightly.
Yeah.
The question is, for the senior, for the quilters and the seniors, is there another venue, and if there is, could the building be just stopped, not taken down, because Jim, I, Jim and I had a brief chat, and we, given the mitigation you'd have to do, because there is those bad things there, could we, could we find another home for those, those individuals to meet?
We possibly could, would it be a consistent location? Absolutely not, just because of other programming and stuff. We could utilize space in the Pop Whalens, space at Abenaki, but in the off-season, those aren't really readily available, we also utilize the Great Hall a lot, so it just depends on availability for that. I know the quilters in the summer typically go to the library, so that's an option, but I think at the library, there is a limit for how many weeks that you can rent out a space, so it wouldn't be a year-round thing. So there are options, but they're not consistent options, I would say.
But if, if you took those seniors, could all, the town hall could be pretty consistent?
Correct, yes.
If we wanted to, you know, and we may have to look at some of that, and, and maybe, I think you like to take them out to Abenaki in the summer, is that where you've been taking them?
Yes, we have utilized Abenaki in the summer, the only issue with that area, just the parking lot itself, where the building is located and walking, the parking lot is a little uneven for people who are unsteady on their feet, so they, having more of a flat surface is a little safer for them.
Can you, aren't there parking spaces behind for, that you could make those for those?
There are four, but.
Only four?
We're talking about a group that, there's a lot more that would need parking than four.
Can the, can the quilters use rooms at the Pop Whalen rink?
I think the issue would be there is that they have all their machines, so they need to plug them all in, so I, I don't think they would have what they needed at any of those locations, I'm not sure what, yeah.
I mean, they put in plugs in the community center and paid for them in order to have enough sp, places where they could put them all in.
Actually, Dave Owen, Dave Owen helped get that done, I remember that. My, my, my whole thing about that building is, what I, what I saw down, down the street, it's got stuff that, you know, I, I, it's got stuff there, and that's, that's that. Okay? And I don't think we should be having human beings in there breathing stuff, so that's my two cents on that.
Well, and, and we move summer, day camp now is down at the pavilion, or up again, we've got them at.
The day camp is typically held at the pavilion, we used to use the community center as a rainy day location, but since we started doing the seniors there, it's a little difficult. So right now, if it's a very inclement day, we kind of watch closely for the weather, we just relocate them over to Abenaki and Pop, because there's a, a variety of places for them to go, but if it's just slight rain, they can stay under the pavilion, and then they can still play when the weather clears up.
And I'm just kind of doing the fact that we have other places for our children.
Didn't you do, didn't you use the carpenter's school gym too for a while?
Uh, we did, but it seems that every time it would rain, it, there would be, they would be doing the gym floor, so it was a little difficult, so.
They do it in the sun.
So we kind of went out, because it was, it wasn't very consistent. I also just wanted to mention about the fireworks, so the fireworks I had budgeted, I think it was supposed to be fourteen thousand, or fourteen-five-hundred, I think it was supposed to be, and then it went back to the twenty-twenty-three budget, because it was the twenty-twenty-four budget, default budget, to thirteen thousand. However, while we were in negotiations with the budget, we got an email from the company that there was an increase about their insurance, so that's why it had to go to seventeen-four. So currently, I don't have enough money in my budget to run fireworks, because I only have the thirteen thousand.
You call that late-breaking news. Their, their schedule was a little outside of our schedule.
Yes.
That's the way things tend to work.
And I guess I was thinking is, because in the economic development committee, committee budget, there's two thousand five hundred that I don't use for fireworks, that I thought we could put over there and take care of, but I guess we can do those transfers as we look down, because.
What, Jim, am I correct, you said, is the dockhand budget seventeen thousand dollars?
Seventeen-nine-eighty-two.
Yeah, and they, and they, the dockhands are there which days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
I think it's Saturday and Sunday for the most part.
Just Saturday and Sunday.
And, yeah, some, yeah, some of the holidays, yes, but they're not there Fridays.
And how many staff usually, it's three, right?
We try to keep it minimum of, of two, and max of three.
Yeah. And it's, and it's a great program.
There's no question about that.
Not, not disputing it, would I have any heartburn if you added a bunch of these things back in? Not at all, but I had to put it out there for you guys to consider, because there's a lot that we need to cover.
Well, I, I, maybe I don't understand the rules, we put things back in, are we, do we have an obligation to take the equal amount out? Or do we just keep throwing stuff back?
I think you've got a buffer.
We just keep throwing stuff back on the fire?
We have a buffer of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
See, I don't think we do.
No, we don't.
No, we don't, I don't think so.
No, we don't.
Because I think we owe a hundred, a hundred and eighty-two with that capital reserve.
Correct.
So I don't see that.
You, you take that.
We're negative fifty still.
You take that two hundred and forty-three, and then you back out the one eighty, and then there's a number, okay, then you look at your other items, what do we want to do? So.
Yeah, you know, there's a little gibber jabber here, but I mean, the, the, this presentation and some of the incremental things we're talking about are telling me that we, we, we are goal-seeking a much bigger number than two forty-three, or whatever it is, we, we got to go find some more money. If in fact, we are going to fund doing something with code enforcement, if in fact, we have these other things that are coming to us, and that's why, again, that's why I asked you right up front, it's going to be hard, and I don't want to go, I, I do not support, I'll do everything short of, of recommending that we, that we, we talk about having less people in this town working to support the customers, that's not where I'm going. But I, I feel, from what I see, I haven't asked Mr. Randall to help us understand what he's given up, I feel that we're getting, we're getting to a point where we have to make these, have to make tough choices.
I think they're all tough choices, and I think, I'm comfortable if the department head can see where he can make the cuts, I will leave it up to that department head, they know far more than I.
I agree.
I have one question about the non-union wage adjustment, does that take them up, is that a two thousand and twenty-five adjustment? Because if you go back to the default budget, their money was not in there, or are they still behind? That's what.
Good question, they are still behind, and I, I think that most departments are going to be able to manage that within their existing budgets.
So are you telling me that with this budget and the things we're changing, they will all be paid the same amount as a raise, they will get a raise just like the unions and everybody else does? So we put this in, everybody's going to be the same?
Correct.
All right, that's why, I just want a clarity.
It is, the unions get five percent, the non-unions getting five percent, full-time and part-time.
So I have a question for you, Jim, so the, the engineer, is that, is that position being advertised right now?
So it is still actively posted.
So is the codes officer being advertised?
The codes officer is advertised, the initial closing date was Friday, Michelle's putting things together right now, so that we can review them, hopefully later this week, I'm going to be able to have a preliminary review of the code enforcement applications.
So the planning director, is that being advertised right now?
It is still being advertised.
So those numbers, I'm just trying to get a big number on what those costs are going to be, and are they baked into the cake?
Um, so.
Good question.
Yeah, it's a very good question. I can't recall right off the top of my head. I want to say we had $84,000 baked into the town planner wages. Code enforcement, I want to say it was in the $60,000 range. Can't remember right off the top of my head.
I thought I saw 52 to 77, or 52 to 72.
But I think the budget is in the $60,000 range, if I remember correctly.
So we may have to.
So we, there are items there that, depending on credentials, qualifications, who we are able to hire, those may have to go north. And, you know, that's where, you know, hey, we may have some flexibility depending on, you know, okay, is the person coming to us on a family plan, a single plan? Because there's a huge differential in those. It's always a wild card budget, and we do end up annually having some favorability in that line.
Talk to me about the engineer.
So the engineer's being advertised for, the engineer has been advertised for, for the longest time. I would sit here and say that if we had an engineer that was qualified, that we could get to come in, we would find a way to hire them.
So what's our, what's our number?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember. I want to say it was 110.
Okay, so are we, so what are we, what are we spending a year on engineering that our engineer could do?
That's a good question, so, that I don't think we can give you, maybe Steve can give you an answer, but I think we need to do some research on that. Because obviously, a lot of our capital projects have the engineering tied into those capital projects. We do have some engineer that's tied into the miscellaneous operating budgets throughout town, such as the consultants for $10,000 that you saw remove. That's engineering fees for all intents and purposes.
I'm just trying to say, these projects are out there, we have engineering costs, but we're advertising for an engineer. We could subsidize those engineering costs for a salary and increase that salary so we could get somebody in here.
So I think that the challenge with that becomes, if we hire an engineer, is that engineer actually going to use their stamp for the town of Wolfboro? Or are they going to be oversight of some of the other projects? Like if we have a bridge project, our engineer's not going to do the engineering on that. They're going to do the oversight for it. Same thing with the sewer pump stations. We hire contracted engineers. We've had good luck with that, and we've had bad luck with that.
So I would, I would venture to say, it would have to be a hybrid, but if the person's an engineer, they got to be able to know what an engineer does.
Correct. But I would also sit here and say, we've had some engineers working for us that, as contracts, that.
If we find an engineer. I'll say RIB site.
If we find an engineer that can certify and stamp water, sewer, roads, bridges?
Not going to happen.
We can't afford them.
I was going to say, it's not going to happen.
We can't afford them. That's like, three or four times.
Steve Randall, let the microphone, please.
If I may, I might be able to impart a little bit on this. So throughout most municipalities in New England, and even my predecessors here with Dave, they never actually stamped anything. That's more of a liability thing. So when, if I'm an engineer and I use my stamp on my plans for my pump station in town and it goes to hell, that comes back on me specifically, plus then the town directly. Versus you, as an outside engineer, we hire you to do those things, the liability falls with you. That's number one. Number two, if we get federal money, like Mill Street, we are not able to do that. We have to hire an outside consultant for the oversight for that. Lena Street Pump Station is all our money. We're overseeing that in-house. So it's, it becomes a difference of size and then other parts. So to do a hybrid, like Brian says, a civil engineer stamp. But what is their background in? Is it, is it a civil engineer that's, has a background in roads, or a background in pump stations, or a background in water? The odds on finding somebody that is that multifaceted is about zero. So it's the, you know, the pick your poison part of that. You know, Dave's, Dave's background was in pump stations. That's where.
Dave Ford ran our sewer treatment plant, did our roads, worked for Viola Water.
Correct.
So he had those, that knowledge base.
Nowadays, people are specializing more so in what it is that they want to do. So I have found, or we have found, that having our outside engineers doing a lot of this because they, number one, can capture a lot of extra funding for us. That mechanism helps, the oversight helps, and that whole mechanism works well, so I have you do my roads, I have you do my water, I have you do my sewer. And we split it up like that, and it's working well. If we could find a hybrid all-engineer to come onboard, that would be great. It's just the extent of whether or not they're actually going to design or stamp anything themselves. And up to this point, that doesn't exist.
So what's the, so what's your weak link of an engineer requirement? As far as like, would help you the most in your day-to-day operations? If we hired an engineer, what would be, what would be what you would want to see?
That's a good question, John. I'm not sure I can answer that right at the moment. So it's, that's a tough one, because to, if we're just going to find somebody that's, say, pump station direct, but if we're not going to have them design the pump station, then what, 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 what does that fill? If it's a funding mechanism, somebody that's going to just specialize in grant funding or oversight of monies, that would be very beneficial, obviously, because there is money out there. It's never free, but there is, there is money out there that could be, that could be pursued.
So an engineer that does grant funding, that helps us get these different grants so that we can hire out other engineers to oversee the project?
That would be a way? Because right now, what it is, is if I want to do the water main project, or if I want to do lead service, that's one that we're actively looking at right now. I put together all my stuff for lead service, but then you're the one that's going to design all the lead service work for me. You write the grant, you don't charge me anything to write the grant. You do it, and all of your stuff is built into that, and all of that money is then, if it's a grant, or if it's a low-interest repayment, that is all tied into that, and it all just goes away. So it's, it's kind of a one, more of a one-stop shop system, specific for, because you do water, Linda does roads, Aldo's sewer, you know what I mean? So it's, people are specific.
We've, we've tried to get two eyes on a project, and we were doing it by consulting engineers. And first of all, about stamping, that RIB site, they blew it, and we got 6-point-some million dollars because they had blown it. If we had stamped it, we would have been out that. It's the second set of eyes. It's to see and catch what went wrong. Dave Ford was catching some of the things that were wrong up on that RIB site. So I can do it with putting more money in for a second set of engineers. One of the things I think we're seeing with the engineering firm, as we're having the trouble, they're losing engineers, they don't have the staff, so we're kind of caught. We're not getting all the engineering. And we had Wright Pierce, who did our sewer, our water, when we had the big issue with the RIB site. So I'm somebody that wants a bunch of different companies, so if you have somebody, you might be able to call to check on it. So it's just me.
And what I have structured that is exactly what Linda said. So by having the different ones, and then they all do, the companies all do everything, but if I have one specialized in each thing, then I can take yours, and I can just run it past Linda. Linda can look at it and say, yeah, Steve, that looks great. You know what I mean? And vice versa. And nine times out of 10, it's a, it's a zero charge, or a very low charge for that second set of eyes, depending on what it is.
So I'm just thinking about our projects. When we hire an engineer, we do something, I mean, what are we getting for the value of the engineer when they come in, they design something for us? Do they stay with us the whole way for the project? Do they, once, once we hire a subcontractor to install that, then do they, does that engineer validate the work that's happened, and then it can hand it over to you and say, our engineer's taking care of this, I'm out of this?
So it depends on the size of the project. For example, when we had our two pump stations designed, that went not well. We'll just leave it at that. So we've moved on from that engineering company to a different one, who is seeing the oversight all the way through, from the submittal process to the contract documents, all the way through for that. They are proofing all of that for us, lockstep with DES, because that's how that funding comes through, that's how we have to do it. You know, even out here, you know, at times, the other part of the, I'm going to throw in for the mechanism with, with federal funding, is we have to do low bid. Unfortunately, if we take Fed money, that means we have to go with low bid. So it's not always what we would like, but that's what we have to work with. The benefit of having the engineering service with that, and an outside independent one at that, is that takes away any, you know, we have our eyes on it. So if it's a water project, whether it's me, my water foreman, or any of the water staff that is out there, plus the resident engineer that is out there every day with them, on top of that, plus DES swings by and takes a look at it at the same time. So you have an extra three entities of eyes on that for a project of that size.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. I have a question for you.
Sure.
I agree with you, by the way. Having one person that can do all those different things is a single point of failure, and it doesn't work. It's textbook stuff that you're reading schools. So does the position description that's out there meet, meet what you're looking for?
Well, I think that, honestly, I haven't read it in a while.
That was really my question. No.
No.
So we either take it down or rewrite it, or what?
Or we don't go out for it.
I think we've had that.
Or leave it up and hope we don't get one of them.
Well, we've had it advertised since, since Dave left, which was in September of '22. So I think it effectively probably went into effect January 1 of '23, or somewhere in that vicinity. And to my knowledge, we've only ever gotten one or two resumes of nowhere near qualifications. I mean, not even, you know, like, not even in the, even in the state of qualifications.
I made my point. Thank you.
So, I got a couple of things I want to say. One, let's giddy up. When we have applicants come for job positions, let's move it through as quickly as we possibly can. I don't know how we can, but if we can giddy it up a little bit and, and get them interviewed quicker, that would be a great thing. I've mentioned before, I would love to see if we could possibly do it, our planner become our grant writer. Whoever we end up hiring as a planner, if they have any grant-writing skills, that would help out immensely. It doesn't have to be an engineer that does grant writing. It could be a planner, it could be somebody else. I had an idea that might be a little outside the box, but I thought about maybe the Board of Selectmen could create an engineering commission or committee. Maybe there is a group of retired or people working in the engineering field in our area who would be willing to sit on a committee and a commission and work with Steve, and potentially go out and be other eyes on projects.
I, you know, I, you and I had talked about it, and I thought that was a doable project. I have two engineers on Wolfboro Waters. We, I'll bring the Route 28 project to them, I've already sent it out, and they'll kind of take a look at it and make sure all the things that we, as a town, may want in terms of water, and the water that's going to go into Wolfboro Bay, that we've done everything we can. So there might be some engineers, retired engineers, who'd like to help.
Isn't Mr. Shrinka, wasn't he a DES?
Yeah, but I think he's still working part-time. I think he's on this, isn't he on this project out here? These two are not.
He's still active DES, so you can't, you couldn't use him.
Okay.
He's, he's an active state of New Hampshire employee, which he is our, he's our guy from here.
But, but maybe we can find some people like that, that are retired, that would be willing to help out the cause.
Question for Jim.
Yep, go ahead.
Jim, I assume, from what you've, what you've demonstrated here tonight, that you've had, I'm not being false here, you know, phony, you've had some in-your-face kind of conversations with your leaders. And I, if I had more questions, I presume you don't want me talking to them, you want me to just write, write up the questions, get them to you? That's absolutely fine. Fine. Okay. That's great. That's the way I'll do it.
Board members, do you have any other questions? Next on the agenda, yeah, questions from the press. Can you find out whether she's here?
No one's on.
Not on.
Okay. The next item is public input, and Suzanne Ryan gave me this before the meeting. She didn't want to sit through it all. She had done some work on a sign for the household hazardous waste building, and has gotten a quote, and this is up to the board. I had asked her to wait. We're still working out how we're going to put on the household hazardous waste things this year. I think once we get that all settled, I think this is great. I think we want to do it. I just don't know where or, or when. And so she asked me to ask the board whether you wanted to go on with it now. This is the sign, and it's cost $175.
Well, I would go and offer to go look at the household hazardous waste building and see if there's a location, and, and just to scope things out and then report back to the board.
I, I, I think that's great. I would still like to look at what the contract and who we're going to work with.
Right.
Before we decide to put it on, but I think that's great for you.
Well, all you got to do is get a template, and then you can put a template up on the building, and then put a thumbtack in it and say, is this what we want?
So should we?
This is what, I'll give you this then.
I, yeah.
Do you have it already?
I do.
Okay. Well, then I'll keep this one.
So should we have a little explanation of why we're holding off on this?
Well, yeah, I'll tell you, Paul and I went down to Alton to talk with Alton to decide how we would deal with household hazardous waste collections for 2025. Steve was supposed to be talking to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. My understanding, they're going to come back with some kind of contract. I think if they're going to use it, we should kind of understand what's going to go, happen there. There's a real question of whether you put that roof on or not. So I think there's some things that still need to be decided. I am 100% dedicated to it. It's not that, it's just that I think it's not quite the right.
Now, Alton has decided that they don't want to partner with us, correct?
That's what I've heard, that that's the case.
And this is what I'm trying to get at. This is the information that people should know.
So we, today, I believe it was, did receive a letter from Alton, it's a public document, there's no secret. The town of Alton is exercising the option that they would like to dissolve the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Wolfboro for the household hazardous waste program. That letter came in today. I had a conversation with Mr. Heath from Alton late last week on the matter. The way that this is set up is, they advise us by April 1 that they want out. We need to work through the particulars, and the program would become dissolved effective December 31, 2025, if the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen agreed to it. One of his asks was to potentially look at dissolving the funding mechanism of it sooner than later. However, I think we have problems with that associated with our contract with the Hall, or which we have some issues with as well, to provide us services. So there's a lot of moving pieces that are taking place as we speak, essentially.
And this is why I think we should hold off on putting the sign up until we get all this stuff worked out.
Brian, I agree with you on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And this is why I was, I was hoping that we could get a good explanation so that people don't think that we're doing this because of any other reason, just because right now, it's all up in the air, and we got to figure out what we're going to do. And maybe there's, if we shut down the facility and we don't use the facility anymore, why would we have a sign up there if nobody's going to even attend to it, and we're not going to, it's not going to be operating anymore?
I, I, that's, I think we need to put this together so it all makes sense. I think we will still operate. I think we'll still have collections here. And we have a commitment for this year, so we've got some contracts there we have to work. The reason I did not say anything, I have not seen that letter. I heard it was coming, we heard it was coming, but it hasn't, didn't land here that we had it as a known fact. Okay.
So back to that point, so as a town, we're not ruling out not being a household hazardous waste?
No.
Base?
We're not, we're, we're not ruling out that we're not going to have household hazardous waste here. We have five, I think, for this year. That contract is set. What we, six, there he points out, we have six that are scheduled and are in the contract. Where we go from here is what we have to look at when we dissolve this, and how we're going to put on.
So I think what we're talking about with a six-foot sign is... So I think what we're talking about with a six-foot sign is if we know that we're at least going to have five, I mean, why can't we do it in our honor and just say, let's put the thing up there and and let people know that that's what we're thinking about?
The I think the question becomes, I I I'm supportive of the sign. I think the question is, there's a desire to put it on the building and I'm not sure the building is going to get built based on the correspondence that I've had with Alton. So putting a sign up on a couple of posts in the area, I think I would be behind that. But I think it was my understanding that it wanted to be on the building. And regarding the operations, we we're working through the final particulars of it now for twenty twenty-five, but we're working with Lakes Region Planning Commission to continue for twenty twenty-five as the provider of the service where Mrs. Silk is no longer with us.
That was pertinent information. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. All right, now I'll open up to any public comment from the audience.
Hi, Mary Deveres. I just wanted to comment as you consider what we've heard tonight with the calendar of events, that that calendar is really a vehicle for the town to contribute to towards marketing of Wolfboro and support the local economy and the efforts of the many, many nonprofit organizations in the community. I just I also had a couple of comments regarding the part-time wages. And that position was created by the town of Wolfboro and recognizing the importance of that function for the municipality. And we, yes, the town of Wolfboro pays all the wages for that part-time position and the Chamber of Commerce pays for all the overhead, including any the needed technology. And but most importantly, I want you to know that that person in the role in that part-time position is well-established, is a most extremely dedicated person and town employee and just receives accolades consistently from visitors, those thinking of relocating to the area and our citizens that are here in Wolfboro. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Is there anybody else who'd like to give us any public input? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, a motion by Brian, seconded by John. All those in favor, aye.